Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Kleiman?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session to conference with the city's law director concerning disputes involving the planning commission that are the subject of imminent court action.
I'll second.
Have a second. Roll call.
And Mr. Kleiman second then?
Oh.
Oh, Steve. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
We will be back shortly after this executive session is over. It's 7:25 and we are reconvening after our executive session. We'll move on to the work session. The first item on the agenda is the site plan review for the industrial buildings at 2321 and 2387 Old Mill Road. If the applicant could please come forward, name an address and overview of what you're looking for this evening, please.
My name is Matthew Webber.
There's no mic on the room.
Your voice projects. Here it comes.
Check. Matthew Webber, Webber Engineering Services, 2555 Hartville Road, Rootstown, Ohio. Here on behalf of Skennell Properties and Project Gumbo. Also with me today is Michael Konzimius of Skennell Properties. And as we've been before, the planning commission a number of times, we are here seeking site plan approval, final site plan approval, for a parcel that has two buildings proposed, 299,000 square foot building. The other is a 156,000 square foot building, expandable with another 60,000 square feet. That is the original plan submitted to planning commission. That plan has, the building is 240 feet wide along the frontage. It, the site consists of a retaining wall that is on the east side. That retaining wall, as discussed numerous times, is in the range, it varies, but it's, we'll just say it's in the name or area of about 18 feet tall. You have two stormwater management basins in the front of the property along Old Mill Road and one stormwater management basin at the northeast corner of the property. The, it has a auto, two auto parking lots and entries, ingress, egress on Old Mill Road, as well as a truck court, if you will, that enters in and off of Old Mill Road. That is the plan that we have presented to the planning commission previously. Through the process of coordination with planning commission and, and some of the requests or concerns of, of the neighborhood, we have provided an, what I will call, an alternate for consideration plan, which I believe the planning commission has, which shows an overlay in red that is contingent solely upon the closing of the parcel, which is the Campbell parcel in the front of the, of the site. We are in, we're near closing on that property. We were trying to have that done today for the confidence of the planning commission. Unfortunately, that is not entirely in our hands, but we are closing on that within the next few weeks. So that plan that we propose, or that we're at least showing as an alternate for consideration is, it utilizes a narrower building, which is not necessarily conducive to ease of leasing, we'll say, in the market. The market is, really looks for a 240-foot building. We have done 210-foot buildings in the past. They're a little bit harder on the market, takes a little bit more of a special user, if you will. But in doing that, that allows us to narrow the usable property, that allows us the opportunity to reduce, if not, and I'll say reduce is the key, and possibly eliminate entirely the 18-foot wall that is of concern. As part of this process, just to, I guess to show that we've, we've tried, I know, assuming all planning commission members know that we've, we've tried through this process, we did have conversation at, at a point with the adjacent property to the west, which is the, I believe it's called the Sifron Building, and the, the property owners there. We did try to acquire additional land to move and slide the site to the west. We do, and we actually did present to planning commission that correspondence and the denial of such request by the planning, or by the ownership, but that was an effort that we made. So we've done some things here that we did take to heart through this process. It's been going on for well beyond, I believe, 60 days. And, and we're, we're actually respectfully requesting that a motion be made this evening to approve the plan as, as presented with the retaining wall and the original 240-foot wide building with consideration of the alternate plan upon closing of that property. But the idea being that we do, when we leave this evening, have an approved plan, a plan approved by planning commission so that we can proceed with the remaining process while the closing of the property continues. With that, I open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. So in, in reviewing all the information provided, what you're referring to as the alternate site plan, or revised site plan, as I've referred to it.
Sure.
In my notes, I think is a definite improvement over what was originally submitted. The ability to eliminate the retaining wall mostly, if not totally, and handle that with grading along the eastern property line is surely better. The ability to relocate the truck court entrance drive so that it now is across from the landscaped area is definitely an improvement over where it was. I would think that there are still a few landscaping issues that need to be resolved based on the revised plan on either side of that truck court driveway. On the west side, you'd need to extend the evergreen landscaping buffer all the way to the driveway. And on the east side of the road, you'd need to train, change from the deciduous trees to evergreen so that there'd be a full buffer year round into the, that courtyard area off of Old Mill. And that would definitely also help that layout. This evening, if there is a motion on this, I think it's going to relate to the revised plan because, at least in my opinion, it's, it's definitely better. And that's what I would like to see you proceed with. And that's obviously under the assumption that you're going to be able to close on the Campbell property, which, from what I hear, I don't know why that wouldn't occur, but obviously you need to finish that process for us to know for sure. David, comments or questions?
Have you shown the revised site plan to any of your prospective lessees?
No.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Correct. Anything else?
No.
Steve?
I appreciate all the efforts that you have done working with this site and trying to accommodate some of the feedback that we've got. I think this revised site plan is a significant improvement, as Mark stated, and I would favor that over the original, but either one is in zoning compliance, so, but if we could make the revised one happen, I think that would be a definite improvement to the area.
Anything else? No, that's it. Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Lynn, anything else on this to share with planning commission?
Nothing else.
Scott, did you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Webber, if you'll have a seat, we'll get back.
If I may, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
With regards to the alternate plan or revised plan, we certainly, we certainly would move forward with that. I guess my request was, just in the process, to ensure that, you know, we are able to proceed with the next steps of the process while the parcel is closing. We have, we have no question that the, the parcel is going to close, but I just want to make sure that if that's three weeks from now, we actually have an approved plan that does allow us to go through the next portions of the, of the process as we have. So we're, we're good with the red, with the alternate or revised plan.
I understand what you're asking, and I will confer with members of planning commission as to which way they would like to proceed.
Certainly. Thank you.
The next item is the final site plan review for the building addition at 8027B Darrow Road. Athan can come forward, name an address and overview of what you're looking for this evening.
My name's Evan Contor with CPK Construction, 8051 Vestia Avenue in Northfield, representing Summit Sound and Security on Darrow Road. And we previously came in front of the planning commission for this project. It's an addition out the rear of the existing building. And there were two items of concern at the first meeting, one being the dumpster enclosure, whether there was one on site existing or whether we had to show one. Turns out, and we drew on the drawing, that there, there was a current six-foot board-on-board fence dumpster enclosure on site, so we've located that on the revised site plan. The other item was a variance regarding being able to match the existing building, or the new building, to the existing building on a side setback. Since then, we've gone in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals and received approval on the variance to match up the new addition to the existing building, so we're following up at this point.
Thank you. I don't see any issues with what you proposed. You've done what needs to be done, I think, for us to move forward on this. David, any comments or questions?
No comments, no questions.
Steve?
Nothing.
Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Lynn?
Nothing else.
Thank you. If you'll have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda. Thank you. We will roll into the regular meeting agenda. It is 7:35. The first item is the approval of the minutes from the April 18th, 2022 planning commission meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes?
One correction.
Yes.
Page one, vote for the vice chair was not passed unanimously, it was 3-1.
That is correct. Lynn, if you could have that updated. Anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
The minutes will be accepted as amended then. Thank you. Next item is public participation. Public participation is the opportunity for members of the community to address planning commission. If you would like to speak, please come forward and give your name and address. You may speak on items specific to the revised site plan. You may speak on topics not previously discussed tonight or in previous planning commission meetings. You may not speak on topics or items previously addressed and resolved by government agencies or authorities having jurisdiction. For example, groundwater issues already addressed by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and others. Limit your comments to no more than four minutes per speaker. No sharing of time. You get your four minutes if you can speak on something that has not already been addressed or mentioned in this description. Please follow the rules this evening. If the rules are not followed, public participation will be stopped and we will continue on with the meeting agenda. Thank you for your cooperation. With that being said, is there anyone who would like to come up with and speak and address planning commission?
I'm going to try to remember all those rules you laid out, Mark, so bear with me.
Happy to repeat them if you'd like.
Oh, I'm sure there, there may be occasion for that. Lynn Clark, 2485 Old Mill Road. Now, there's a couple of things that I don't believe have been addressed in any form or fashion and/or resolved. One of those is, you know, there's a whole bunch of reports, a lot of paperwork has been generated, and it all goes to things in our city's ordinances. And one of those things is very, very close to my heart because it talks about the neighborhood I live in, and in particular, the house I live in and a couple of my neighbors' houses. Now, none of this is to be taken personally. It's all about the processes the city has. I believe that they are broken and that they are not protecting the safety, health, and welfare of the community. So the first thing, CEC report says, oh, guess what? There's no old houses in this area. They, they have a paragraph in their report and it talks about a house torn down 20 years ago. My house was built in 1848. I've got a couple of neighbors and their houses are at least as old or older than mine. Just, just an oversight. Now, number two, I don't believe this has been resolved. It has been mentioned. Army Corps of Engineers permit currently active for this site has two provisions in. One, it is, you're not to fill in stream number one that's shown on their permit. Second is, you're not allowed to build buildings south of stream number one. Now, that's a totally different footprint than we're seeing on either of these plans in front of us. This CEC report also, and this goes back to August of 2019, it's got one paragraph in there titled hydrogeology. Now, it says nothing in that paragraph about hydrogeology. It talks about stream flow and a radius of .1 square miles. I don't know what that means. I've only been a hydrogeologist for almost 50 years, and I don't know what that means. But there's a, a couple of things that may not have been mentioned so far. One is...
One minute.
One is the quality of water. I understand it's very common to go out and grind up the tree stumps that are there. This is some wood chips from tree I cut down last year. This is what's going to be going into our water supply. Now, I could, if I had more time, give a little demonstration. There was a report that was filed earlier and it hasn't been resolved by Ohio EPA. Ohio EPA said a thorough investigation should be done. We've been working with a world-class hydrogeologist and he agrees that without doing a series of additional soil borings, groundwater borings, tests, that this site represents a substantial risk to the environment.
That's your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward with anything different, new?
Yeah, hi, my name is Mark Skoski, 2445 Old Mill Road, Hudson, Ohio, but live in the city of Twinsburg. I'll start with, basically, you guys all sat here and got into planning commission, you took an oath to follow your rules and regulations. Have any of you guys read ordinance number 1103, 05, .05, and know it entirely? I remember B, right there, tells you that what you guys are going to vote on, whether you vote yes today, is you're not going on that ordinance number. What ordinances are you guys actually following in the zoning codes and in the ordinances? What ordinance, what ordinance number is actually approving us? What zoning code numbers are actually approving us? Because from reading through zoning books that we were given to, from the city of Twinsburg that don't have a stamped seal on them, because they have a stamped seal that says a word of excellence, which to me, it's, I mean, I could have went to the dollar store and bought that. So, I mean, if the city's giving me that and I'm asking for a certified code book, I'm not even getting it. It's, it's not even right. A couple other things. I sent an email looking for questions and addressing things. Okay, they tried to address some things, but lighting was a big issue, less lighting, everything else. I saw the plans are there, it's just as much lighting, if not more lighting, than was originally there. The tree buffers aren't, aren't any great, aren't any better. Them still putting truck traffic on Old Mill Road doesn't need to happen. They have a road that's in the back, they need to get, they need to get an address that's either on Case West or on Summit Commerce to get the traffic off of Old Mill Road. Old Mill Road is not a traffic road, not intended for more traffic. Another thing I asked about was Plan B. What is Plan B? That's what I want to know. When I lose my water, what's going to happen? Whose at fault is this? Do I come back and sue the city? Do I come back and look at Skennell? Who, whose, whose problem is this? I mean, I have four kids, me and my wife. What do I have to do? I have to get up and I have to go to a hotel so I can take a shower in the morning? And I have to be inconvenienced because somebody wants to build 535,000 square feet of buildings? No, it shouldn't be that way. What's Plan B? There's got to be a resolution to it before they even get approved for anything. Second would be, okay, they want to minimize the wall, four feet, but they didn't change the grade height of the building. The grade height of the building is still 10,000, or 1,083. The road that is going to it is at 1,072. That's 11 feet that the road go, from the road up to the building goes up 11 feet. But the existing grade is 1,000, is 1,069. So it's still 14 feet of fill.
One minute.
So there's still a huge issue there. It's not just, oh, we're going to take a 20-foot wall down. No, now they're going to have a 1% grade that's just going to erode into Hutchinson's property. It, that doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Epple, 2668 Old Mill Road, Twinsburg Township, Ohio. To the honorable committee members here this evening, Council Representative Barr, Mr. Yates, and our law director, I am deeply concerned that this train is moving down the tracks rapidly without all of your residents, the township residents, and the neighborhood of Old Mill Road's concerns being met. As they say, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I verbally presented to you last meeting and hope, I hope all of you were able to read the planning commission meaning minutes from March 2nd, 1992, as your predecessors on this committee saw many of these potential problems arising and tried to prevent them. I applaud Mr. Hill, Mr. Gilkey, and Mr. Lesman for seeing this property being this exact problem and trying to prevent these issues. If you have not reviewed those minutes, I highly suggest that you do so. I, we, come here tonight to do what we've been trying to do all along and do the neighborly thing. The neighborly courtesy that was not extended to us by the developers, the neighborly thing that was suggested from the beginning by Mr. Barr for my personal experience when I wanted to build my garage attachment to my house, after I had an idea of what I wanted, I presented those ideas to my neighbors next to me and across the street. I believe I was friendly in my approach and considerate to my neighbors. The same courtesy was not applied by these developers in this situation. I learned many new things that were not in my scope during this process, things like what hydrology, hydrogeology, and the fact that ordinances are municipalities' laws. I understand that the developers are meeting the objective zoning rules set forth for the type of property that the land is currently zoned as, albeit without a point of demarcation between the property surrounding on three sides not being the same type of zoning. Something that Mr. Yates said at the, the meeting in March, my first appearance here to this committee, is that we have to do what is legal. So what I'm asking this committee is to take all the facts and data we have been asking from the beginning and just apply them to the subjective rules and the laws that the oath of your position allows you to do. Mr. Walker, at the last meeting, you asked, and I quote, "What existing proposed usage are going to be disharmonized by this development?" And I would like to ask you, if this proposed development has such a harmonious relationship to the properties around it, why do we need to widen the road? Why do we need to change the speed limit? What current data do you have to enforce the items in the ordinances such as noise pollution, light pollution, the value protection of the surrounding homes, either in the township or in the city? Water, traffic, ground pollution, these types of lingering effects, these type of facilities create that are not cohesive to the neighborhood? If this property is so harmonious to the area, why are so many people here concerned about its impact? And these are things we can foresee. What about the unforeseen things, items we just cannot predict at this time? Again, I'm not against development, however, I am against the wrong development. Mr. Kleiman, at 2 hours and 48 minutes into the last planning meeting, you asked Mr. Webber if there was another way to have the building built. And after a bit of banter, there was an answer to the effect of there are multiple ways to skin your favorite pet, if you recall. Now, I'm calling, I'm not calling Mr. Webber a liar, however, I do believe he misled you in his answer. After reviewing 130 pages of permits submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, and various legal agencies, I believe you were intentionally misled. There were three different drawings of the building submitted to these agencies that Ms. Muter had emailed me on March 22nd.
Thank you. Trying to go fast. Thank you.
My point to this is be very careful to allow these types of people to twist the truth, not fully answer the objective questions, and ask in a fully truthful manner, specifically after repeated attempts by those on this respective board. We're here to ask for your help to protect our road, both city and township residents, to protect our homes with the available resource, water, good health, good, healthy, clean drinking water, to protect the residential rural nature of Old Mill Road, and to not allow 80,000 pounds of truck to have to stop for the school buses and to minimize the impact. To Mr. Yates, I wish you the best in your new endeavor, but as you move on, please remember that there are at least two people in this room that have lived on Old Mill Road their entire lives, want to stay here, and leave a positive legacy behind to what Old Mill Road is, what Mr. Hill, Mr. Gilkey, and Mr. Lesman tried to prevent. Please follow your laws and ordinances, all of them. Please keep Old Mill. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're hearing a common theme here today about the city's own ordinances, which actually are very good when you read through them. And really, if, I think if this, if this group knew those ordinances well, we wouldn't need to all be here today talking about these things. So one of the things I noticed in the ordinance is that the very first requirement for any vegetation, any trees cut down, any site work is done, is a full preservation plan. And I've asked the city a couple of times, but I haven't got a very good answer if a full preservation plan was completed and approved by the board.
It was.
It was? Okay. I would, I would still like to see that. And this preservation plan then, to be clear, was completed last year before they cleared the property?
It was.
Okay. And, and per the city ordinances here, the preservation plan shall specify the following. Construction line drawing indicating all buildings, parking, vehicular areas, grading, cut and fill, stockpile areas, anything to be disturbed or cleared, location of all utility lines, preserved areas of trees, on and on. anything to be disturbed or cleared, location of all utility lines, preserved areas of trees, on and on. At the time, did we have a full construction drawing of buildings, parking, vehicular areas, grading?
We had a concept plan, an approvable concept plan.
So this preservation plan is, well, the city ordinance is pretty specific about the goals of this preservation plan. I'll just hit on a couple of them here, but less air pollution, reduce noise and light layer, moderate air temperature, reduce erosion of sediment, maintain wildlife habitats, provide natural shading, protect property values, enhance the natural beauty of the community. I could go on through some different sections here. Because it's actually very good, the ordinance is very thorough on this. Let's see, I want to read a couple more of these. "The proposed site plans provide for harmonious groupings of buildings, as well as harmonious relationships to existing and proposed uses on adjacent properties. The proposed site plan is sensitive to the nature, to the natural character of site, and to the extent practical, preserves significant natural features." So this preservation plan, which per city ordinance had to record the sizes of all trees over 24 inches, types of vegetation and plants, full analysis of, analysis of wildlife habitats. I, I think that'd be really useful for us to be able to see, because I'm fairly confident that the full preservation plan was not completed and approved by this, this group. Which is actually a misdemeanor in the city, apparently. All right, so the landscaping plans of, of the ordinance, some of the goals. Reduce noise pollution, reduce air pollution, prevent water pollution, prevent visual pollution, protect air temperature, and reduce artificial light layer. Really hard pressed to look at those plans and see any of those goals being accomplished here. Required buffering between different land uses. Here we have industrial and residential. I guess all I'm getting at is, I don't think there's anything here that we need to tell you. You know how we feel about it. It's all laid out here in the city ordinances, and I think if you all really try to do this justice, which is a very well put together set of documents, this, this plan just doesn't make sense. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Shawna Peterson, 2386 Old Mill Road. At the last planning commission meeting, it was repeatedly asked, "Are you the property across the street from Gumbo?" I am the property across the street from Gumbo. At the last meeting, Ms. Muter, you stated, "We cannot deny Skinnell access to their property." You are going to put a turn lane across the street from my house and load it with semis. You are going to deny me access ingress and egress to my property. How, how is that fair to the residents? There is an easement at CVS, and in that easement, it states that CVS acknowledges that Concord property may be developed at a subsequent date, and that Concord may apply to the city to run that roadway through at Summit Commerce. I know Concord no longer owns that property, but Skinnell does. Skinnell owns the property next to CVS, behind CVS, and across the street from my home. The Cifron property has been separated in parcels. We assume, because we're not naive, it is so that it can be industrial developed as well. Has Skinnell approached the city of Twinsburg to run Summit Commerce directly through as a dedicated roadway for industry and stay off Old Mill Road? Have they?
The easement that you're speaking of is 35 feet to 40 feet wide.
Correct.
That easement was only meant to allow for the site behind CVS to be accessed from 91.
Okay.
It was never intended to be a public roadway, and it was never intended to...
Has it been looked at to be a public roadway?
It's private property on the, on the south side of the Cifron building.
Right, which has been parceled out as a separate parcel, it is no longer part of that large parcel.
That's, it's on private property, there's no right of way there.
Okay. Has, has anyone approached Cifron about it? Has Skinnell approached Cifron about purchasing that property?
I think Matt Weber addressed that in his comments.
That was the parcel in the front. You would, I, I'm sorry, I missed, maybe I misunderstood you. Were you discussing that parcel? I understood it as you were discussing an easement on the larger parcel.
You need to address your comments to the planning commission.
I apologize.
And then they'll have the opportunity to address it.
I misunderstood him, I had thought he was talking about an easement on the larger parcel. So, there has to be a way to get the traffic off Old Mill. You are going to block all of our access to our properties ingress and egress. We have a right to access our properties as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Gadoch, 9250 Liberty Road, Twinsburg, Ohio. I have been following this scenario with these people from Old World Road, and it has come to my attention that their concerns, one of their concerns has been the height of the building. And I'd like to share with you that I purchased a new zoning code several weeks ago, and I find that a lawsuit that I had filed and won in 2014, limiting the property, limiting the size of the building, was reduced back to its original because city of Twinsburg had violated the zoning, or the voting rights of our people. I vote, when I purchased this zoning code book four weeks ago, I found that same old language in our zoning code book that I had gone to court and won. It's still in the books as if it hadn't even been to court, eight years later. That's why, what zoning code book are you using to review these plans? Because if it's the old 2012 Ordinance 97, that was ruled by the judge, invalid. It must be changed by the vote of the people. It cannot be changed by council.
Sorry, was it building height or building area?
Height. I have a copy of the, of the lawsuit. I'm surprised that nobody in this city has read this ruling. These are costly cases in court. You talk about following your rules, who's gonna follow a court order? I'm also concerned, as I read, that the people from Old Mill were denied the right to a public hearing because I believe it was something like property also, and with like property, don't get the right to a public hearing. Well, we better change that law. Because with all of the changes that have happened, and all of these meetings, if those people had been allowed to have a public hearing listed in the paper according to the law, they wouldn't have been running around all these meetings. But they were denied a right to have a public hearing because it's like property that was built 25 years ago. There's so much wrong, so much wrong. And I'm gonna do my best. 10 lawsuits, 10 failures, and still, we're facing continued failures. So thank you. I'm hoping that things will change. I'm looking forward to a new administration. And hopefully, we get things straightened out. Because if we have to hit the streets to make the laws, so that we have more than four minutes here, that we have more than this, we'll get our own restrictions, we'll get our own rules for council meetings, planning, we'll get our own, we'll get them in a charter, we can feel that we're fairly represented. Thank you.
All right, thank you, that will close the public participa... Do you have something new or different to address?
Everything's pretty new, actually. Sometimes it takes three or four times to hear something before you actually hear it. That happens with me all the time in my life.
Mr. Hummel.
I can hear stuff over and over.
Mr. Hummel. Name and address and...
Hummel, 2500 Old Mill.
Address the planning commission.
44236, not 44087. Anyways. The Environmental Commission, very important. See, we have this issue here with industrially zoned area. I get it, people want to do their industrial zoning. And I talked to somebody, so what's the difference between this and something at Enterprise Parkway? If you can't see what the difference is between building something like this in a residential area versus an Enterprise Parkway, you don't have a good grasp of design. The humanity of design, and that's important. See, this is where the Environmental Commission comes in, because they give us that buffer. See, we're talking about environmentally sensitive areas. And we can go through all the stuff that really is new. We haven't addressed a lot of this, like the surface water hydrology, all the groundwater hydrology, none of that's really been addressed properly. I'm not gonna get into that. I'm talking about the protections of the residents with the Environmental Commission. That would've been our buffer, because Sean brought that up. There were a lot of things in there would've protected us in these environmentally sensitive areas. And it would've set the groundwork for the zoning commission to have a set of ground rules to start with. Not just that we're in Enterprise Parkway. No, we're next to a dozen homes that have well water. We don't go maximal. And that's what the zoning Environmental Commission allows for us to do. To see it for what it is. So you don't go to the maximal point. Of course, if you got a zoning book and you're a designer, maybe that's what you do. And I can't fault people for that. Okay, they're just doing their job. But what I can fault is when the process of the zoning, when you have a commission that's supposed to protect us and set some of those ground rules, that that got, that got short circuited there. You know, I looked at some of those tree reports, there was an elm tree on that site. Not that it matters to anybody, but I think it was like 37 inches and 38 inches in diameter, at breast height. There were, I told you guys before, some big trees back there. Now, Mark Sikowski has one that's not near that size, second biggest elm tree in Summit County. And that one, probably the biggest. So, these are the things the Environmental Commission would've picked up on. And in their ability, and in the charter and the zoning commission, if they don't have the expertise, they are allowed to hire the professionals to give them that expertise, whether that be in surface water hydrology? Because a lot of the civil engineers that I know are great at building buildings, and great at putting in bridges, but they don't have an understanding of surface water hydrology. It's a whole specialized field. And I'm not knocking people that don't understand it, but if you don't understand it, don't speak to it.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on now from public participation to the site plan review for the industrial buildings at 2321 and 2387 Old Mill Road. African, can please come back up to the mic. Lynn, do you have anything that you would like to add or to address based on any of the comments that we heard this evening?
I can address the building height comment from Mr. Gadoch. That, the, the height regulation to allow for a 45-foot building was passed in 2012 in the regulations that we're using.
And ruled against it in 2014. After court order. That's what I'm saying, the zoning code is not in effect.
If I may, what do you believe the, the building height is that they should be designed to?
It's 35, as it was ordered by the people. It was amended in 2012 by council without vote of the people. It was ordered by the court in 2014. You go back to the 89 code until the people voted, we have not voted. It is still at 235, red 35, and not 45.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that, that's not my understanding, that it is per the court order.
Okay, we, Ms. Gadoch, please, we'll have to look into that and, and get verification.
Can we ask the law director? Is that something that you can educate us on?
Well, this is, this is a site plan, we don't even have construction drawings yet, where the construction drawing would dictate the building height.
We do know that the proposed height is at 42 plus feet.
Can you speak to this, are you prepared, or is it something that you need to look at?
Well, I, I will say this, Lynn's correct. The zoning code, building height, is correct pursuant to code. I'm not gonna get into the details of it. What I believe was a settlement that predated my, starting here with the city, but I'd be happy to discuss it with Lynn and make sure everything is good.
All right, and as, as Steve said, this is the first site plan review, so if that was something that was...
Yeah, I mean, the reality is the, the building height is within code. That's not an issue. The, as I understand it, the settlement involved other matters that may or may not have been correctly represented tonight to the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, if you'd like to address any of the comments that were made, or any other things, please, now is your time.
First, thank you again to the planning commission, Mr. Barr, Mr. Vazan, for your participation. I, I will say that we've discussed this project a number of times. I feel that all of the questions, comments have been addressed adequately. And I have nothing further but to request a motion to approve the plan as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to see the motion be based on the revised or alternate site plan. It doesn't, I mean, they haven't closed on it yet, I understand. It doesn't appear that that's gonna be an issue. I guess if it was, they'd, they'd have to come back, but that's, that's what I would like to see of the two. You can tell me your thoughts on that, and if you have any other comments or questions for the applicant, David?
I would agree with you on that. Still not happy with it. Some of the things were addressed, which I definitely appreciate you doing. Lose, lose. That's my comment.
Understood.
Steve?
I agree, I prefer the revised site plan and appreciate the cooperation.
Property owner has worked with the city trying to accommodate issues that were raised. And again, this is just the site plan. We still have to go through supplemental drawings, and those have to come back for approval. And the landscape plan, the photometric plan and all that is still forthcoming. So this is just a preliminary process, and we are just a recommending body, council has to approve it. So, but I would be in favor of the revised site plan.
Michael?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
So, I'd like to make this statement here. This project has been reviewed in whole or in part by various professionals, the experts that planning commission relies on for information and guidance. This includes the city of Twinsburg Planner and Planning Department, the city of Twinsburg Engineer and Engineering Department, the city of Twinsburg Fire Department, the Summit County Engineer, Summit County Soil and Water Conservation District, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering, Hydrosphere Engineering, and TMS Engineers. They've issued recommendations, reports, and approvals, and to the best of my knowledge, all incorporated into the development design. While I do wish that the developer would have done less development of the... While I do wish that the developer would have done less development of the, of the property, they have followed the planning and zoning regulations as they exist today. No variances are requested. Complete compliance with the zoning regulations. Based on this, I will be supporting approval of the revised site plan this evening. Anyone else have anything to say? Lynn, anything else on this?
Nothing else.
Scott?
Aye.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and the representatives, along with the submitted site plans and landscape plan for the project Gumbo Industrial Buildings, two-three, two-one, and two-three, eight-seven, Old Mill Road, permanent parcel numbers sixty-four dash zero-nine, one-one-six, sixty-four dash zero-three, five-eight-three, and sixty-four dash zero-three, five-eight-four, date stamped, received May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions: final engineering approval by the city engineer, final approval of the SWP three by Summit Soil and Water Conservation District, final approval of the landscape plan by the city planner, and final approval of the site lighting plan by the city planner. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steve, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes. Three-one, a recommendation to city council for their review and final determination.
Thank you.
Next item is the final site plan review and approval for the building additional at eight oh two seven B Daryl Road. Captain, please come forward. Anything else that you'd like to show the planning commission this evening? No, sir. As previously stated, I think that you've done everything that needs to be done that's been requested on this. David, anything?
No comments.
Steve?
I have nothing further.
Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Lynn, anything else?
Nothing else.
Like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and the representatives, along with the submitted site plans for Summit Sound and Security Building Edition, eight zero two seven B Daryl Road, permanent parcel sixty-four dash zero-nine, two-zero-two, date stamped, received March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move for final site plan approval. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Michael, any discussion, excuse me, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
For final approval. This also will go to council for their final approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications and miscellaneous. David, anything this evening?
Nothing.
Steve?
Yeah, just one thing. Lynn, did we ever get closure on the business sign eighty-two, the landscape business in the residential area with all the fill on the property?
We did not.
I just happened to drive by the other day, and I'm like, I wonder, we have a resolution.
We did not. We, we replaced it in with the property owner, what needs to happen, but I don't believe there's been any action.
Yeah, I know, with COVID and everything, things probably got...
I think even since then, there's been contact between the property owner and the building division.
Okay.
But nothing has been submitted.
Okay, just, just following up.
Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
Michael?
I'm sure.
Scott?
Nothing, sir.
Matt, anything? Lynn, what, what's, what do we have, anything on the agenda?
We have items for our next meeting agenda, but I think I put in an email that we won't meet on June twentieth, because City Hall will be closed that day in observance of June T, and so if you are available, I'd like to move it to the week later, on the twenty-seventh.
I'm good.
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 Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so the next meeting is June twenty-seventh. Anything else, Lynn?
Mr. Shipley, is that a challenge for work today? I don't know if we wanted to make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
To excuse?
So moved.
All right. Motion is, and I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Motion carries for his excused absence at eight-twenty adjournment.